All right, we're gonna open the meeting. This is a special meeting Friday, three o'clock. Just to get some of the housekeeping out of the way, this is going to be because of a lot of people's schedule a shorter meeting. It's only our minutes, you know, of one hour right now, based on other people's schedule that we have to respect. And so in the business is actually straightforward. It's the in the main. The re main reason for this meeting, which was originally scheduled for Monday and now it's been rescheduled to now is to discuss the the Main Street articles for the MBTA Communities Act that were under consideration. So we'll have a discussion on that. And and actually, we're going to vote on that as far as where CPC stands on kind of endorsing those those articles. And then the second half or right after that, we are going to discuss the citizens petitions quantity three from Mr. O'Leary that had the proposal of say, the original Lowell Street parcels. So that will actually be a vote. I had discussion with Danielle, our planner about whether or not we could vote on that today because there was, if many recall, a continuation for the May twentieth to actually have a vote on this. But she spoke with council and our town administrator and determined that it is okay, we can vote on that tonight or today, sorry. So you so used to night meetings and we will do that. So that'll be the second half of that and we will vote on whether or not to endorse the the three articles, citizen petitions that are are for the Lowell Street projects, not parcels. So any questions from the CPC on that? And I will open each time. And once we kind of go around the horn on the first one, the Main Street parcels, we will open that up to the public to share any comments. And then when we finish that, we'll go on to the citizens petition. So hopefully that lays the groundwork for everybody. And again, I'll just start first with the CPC. Any questions off the bat with that process? Okay, so hearing none. Danielle, what's probably the best thing? Would it would it be possible for you to just put up the parcels that we're talking about? So we can then just go around with each member and to talk about, you know, what is their opinion on this? Because I think we we haven't had a lot of time to study this, but there's, you know, we're getting a lot of information. So it'd be good just to get the high level of what what is being proposed for the Main Street parcels?
Sure, I can do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, moment.
Like that design behind you, Danielle.
Oh, thank you. It's my it's my porch, a little hanging on the porch. Now pull up a zoning map and I will share my screen in a moment.
The zoning map's really good, probably for a lot of people. Should have had that ready to go.
No little trouble getting our zoning map to display correctly.
Let me see if I can pull it up too.
Oh, here it is. It's just the difference in in color is a little difficult to see, but I can I can share my screen.
Okay, yeah, and I got it up too, if you needed to.
Okay. Just admitting some people who want to come in. Okay. If people can see this kind of a very slight color difference, but there's this lighter purple area versus the darker purple that surrounds it. It's these properties along Winter Street here. And then Main Street along here, surrounding Stop and Shop, the mobile home, not including Stop and Shop, but the mobile home property, the car wash, former Papa Gino's, Heavenly Donuts, the Sign Company, the property directly behind that, and then Kitty's. And this property that's just adjacent to Kitty's, the 133 Main Street, the commercial strip, and then the parking area directly behind that. So these are the properties we're talking about.
And the the most recent information we got with our or maybe issue backup. So one of the in this overlay right now, there's presently a multifamily overlay for this area, right? The difference, not the difference, but what exists now is that the ground floor needs to be, you know, business for, you know, a mixed use type of construction project, right? Is that that's how it is now?
Doesn't have to be ground floor, but it has to be at least twenty percent of the floor area of the total development. You could have more than one building. And it could be another floor.
And like, right, it could be on a different floor, you're saying, you know, basically the way that's defined. Yeah, that makes sense. So it's not like restricted to the first floor.
The only conditions are basically is the twenty is the day building heights and the twenty percent. It says other uses, which indicates that it was gonna, we were thinking that would be, you know, commercial uses because it's in highway business district. So the twenty percent would be maybe highway business approved things. And then the eighty percent would be residential.
Residential, right? And so with the new with the overlay that then would be for the MBTA three A act, that would get rid of that requirement, right? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead, Danielle.
It would it would preserve a number of options. One, it would preserve the right to develop it under the exact same provisions that exist today. And it would also introduce another option for development, which would be a hundred percent residential option. And that option had some different dimensional and density requirements associated with it, but you could choose either.
Right. In the in the hundred percent one was we the limitations that that we initially have in there are the three stories, right?
Right, three stories would be maximum instead of four.
Right, instead of four. And there was also, was it a dimensional for this for the lot too that kicked in there or whatever? Or if any, was there other limitations that we put on it?
Um, yes. So height would be limitation of forty. We're now at sixty. Or or under a mixed use development or a commercial only development, it would be sixty feet. Then there was an open space provision where a larger amount of the lot, if you develop a hundred percent residential, a larger area of a lot would need to be open space. Whereas there's, I don't think there's any restriction at all on how much open space, or it's a very, very small restriction.
Right. So Danielle, based on and Danielle said the public too and the members. So Danielle went out with to KP Law to evaluate these articles, the sample, you know, call it draft articles. And their feedback was that there some of the restrictions that we would have here for this for Main Street would be could be our questionably how they would stand because the Lowell Road, which is Edgewood, that part parcel would hasn't doesn't have these restrictions. So they would defer to kind of the, you know, one one fits all. They they would allow us to maybe do the restrictive one. And would that be on all three of these items, Danielle? Or did John specifically just mention the three stories like although, you know, I guess that goes hand in hand with the forty feet, right?
No, it's just he just mentioned having not putting Edgewood aside for a minute. But I think what he said was could potentially be of concern would be if we are taking this Main Street overlay district and we're saying that a hundred percent residential development is more restricted than a commercial development in the same zoning district, that could potentially be problematic for three A compliance. I I that was my interpretation of of that opinion that he gave us. Not that it definitely wouldn't be eligible, but that we should maybe, you know, consider whether that could be an issue. And he was gonna look into seeing if we could get an answer from the state, although it's not clear to me that we would be able to get an answer from the state on that. It's just
Right.
You know.
I that's It's interesting, and I'm sure you're correct, but I was I took it that as he in the implication was that with the other district, the other, you know, you have these two parcels or clusters of parcels and the the less restrictive one on Lowell would kind of be the one that would you'd have to at least match that like you couldn't have the. So that's kind of how I took it. I I thought they would look at the other one and you have a less ones less restrictive, ones more restrictive, and they'd want to balance that out and have the same amount of didn't I mean, I thought that anyone else too, that's other members, if you read it, that's how I read it. But your your take, I'm sure it's probably right. They were But that's the I mean, that's the gist of it is that there could be some issues with how it is written right now. That that is what KP identified. So we might have to that would be something to look at. Anything if the other members have read the KP memo? Any questions or did you find anything interesting that was written?
Now, from my position, I didn't see. I mean, I've been reading this for every time they make a change. I've been reading the whole thing. They try to keep up. But no, I just it. I understand what the concerns are, but they may not be concerns. We'd have to ask the state, see if we're if it's okay if we leave it like that. Again, the definition of restriction is you know, which one's more restrictive?
Right.
Um, actually, Dave, I think you're correct about that, that he I I think what he's identifying is both. Now, can you see I've I'm still screen sharing, but I've got the town council opinion up. Are you able to see that?
No, it's just showing the map. But feel free. Yeah, throw that up and and like I said, I think I think it's both. Right. That's I think you're right. That they either, you know, both have the issues.
It's Yeah, I guess I think he's saying it. It could be a concern. I don't know if he's saying it would definitely be not eligible, but
Right. Well, John's never gonna be like that, right? It's never
He doesn't know, I mean.
Yeah, you know, that's he's asked for an opinion. So that, yeah.
You know, it would seem to me that requiring some kind of commercial endeavor and twenty percent of the of the property would be more restrictive than than just plain, you know, than a than a the by right building of of residential, because that would be more in line with the way Edgewood is.
Right, Edgewood is a hundred percent by right residential with it has similar restrictions. It's it's allowed to be a little bit taller than it is. But this is, I think, the the part we were discussing that EOHLC may also require you to justify the the dimensional restrictions you're placing on multifamily housing in the Main Street District, which are more restrictive than those for mixed use. I think he means in the Main Street District and those for multifamily in Lowell in the Lowell Road District. So identifying that as a potential eligibility issue or that we may have to explain why we're doing that.
Understood. Any other questions on the parcels? From the committee? All right, seeing that I'm gonna open it up to the public if you want to comment on them, just stay your state, your name and your address. And I think Danielle can kind of see better and manage that process. You raise your hand or anybody?
Hands up.
Oh, this Steve O'Leary. Steve.
Hi, Steve O'Leary, a member of the select board. Also co sponsor of the sponsor of the citizens petition. As I stated at your meeting or hearing previously, you know, my the genesis of my citizens petition was to just allow for any for some sort of solution to coming into compliance with the MBTA three A zoning act in hopes that the planning commission would be able to come to some sort of a consensus to recommend some positive action on it so that we can come into compliance. You know, we have to hold our nose because we don't like it haven't been forced upon us, but hold your nose and say, this is the best solution that we have. As far as this specific proposal, again, I think it merits your consideration because it's not that different from what we already did six or seven years ago, as far as the rezoning of it would assist us in coming into compliance. It would remove the Martin's Landing parcel from consideration, which would allay some of the concerns that some of the concerns that were were raised. And again, whether they were legitimate or not, that's that's what we're talking about here. I just think it I I just want to applaud your efforts for coming trying to come to a a positive solution to allow the town the opportunity and town meeting, the opportunity to come into compliance. So i if if the majority of of your commission, Mr. Chairman, wishes to support this proposal and propose it to to the select board to put on the warrant, I would be in favor of of supporting it. Again, I'm looking to get to yes here and to get us into compliance. And I again, I applaud Mr. Chairman yourself, Mr. Mr. Pearson, the other members for we're coming forward with another proposal. That's a that's a good thing. This is all. This is all positive action. So again, I applaud your efforts. I hope you're successful in coming to some sort of positive conclusion for a proposal. If not, the citizens petitions are still available to you. And we can discuss those merits later on. But again, I applaud your efforts. I've been your willingness to to meet this afternoon to consider it. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. Appreciate it. Any other anybody else that wants to speak?
I do.
This is and and then hi, Sarah. This is again, just if you could. These questions or any comments should be related to the Main Street articles, you know, not not the citizens petition, just so we can because we're we're gonna talk about that next.
Yep, Sarah McGoldrick for John Bickford Way. I just want to echo Steve's comments. I think this is this is great progress. I I think this plan alleviates some concerns that have been there, and I would encourage you all to support putting it forth for the town meeting.
Thanks, Sarah.
Hey, Dave, John Cost, seventy Oakdale Road or twenty nine Cherry Street, depending on where you look in the town archives, trying to figure out how to raise my hand here, but I can't. Anyway, also, just to reiterate that everybody else is saying would really love to see this put forth to keep us in compliance. I did have a question for the committee and probably Danielle as well. If the legal concern that was that he brought up, is that going to be? Will that keep us in interim compliance? If while they decide while the state decides if that works for them or I guess the question is just kick the can down the road a little bit.
Danielle, you can answer that.
I I think we're in compliance until July fourteenth, and then at that point we we would to stay in compliance, we would need to submit a a plan. I don't think we're going to know whether the plan we are thinking, you know, this particular plan would be fully considered eligible until the state has an opportunity to completely review it. I don't know what the timeframe is. If if we they haven't really made that known. If we've submitted a plan, but then they evaluated it and they find it not to be acceptable. Whether they give us some additional time or whether we immediately become out of compliance, that I'm not sure. I'm not sure that they've said. It's probably something I'll need to follow up with town council about to see if they know. But I don't really think we will get a complete answer on full eligibility until a plan is submitted officially.
All right. Thank you very much. Again, just like everybody else said, I would appreciate as a citizen that the committee put this forward to at least allow us to the opportunity to stay in compliance.
Thanks, John. Keep it open here.
I see Mr. Massey's hand is up.
Hey, Nick.
Is he muted?
Oh, yes, he's muted.
Nick, you have a bad connection, unfortunately.
Yeah, you have a bad connection, Nick.
Sorry, Nick. It's like very, very bad. Can't even hear anything.
Oh, he said he'll try in a bit. Sorry. If you want to put your comments in the chat, you're welcome to do that, too.
Leave it open again for a little bit. I know it takes a little bit of time on when you're in person, you would just raise your hand, come on up. But this is how
I see a couple other race names. I see Mr. Gannon has a hand up. Then I see Mr. Mills has a hand up.
Sure. Jim, I guess Jim first.
I'm in my car, so if this is bad, I will I'll drop back off. I just want to truly echo what I've heard, and that is thank you for meeting today. Thank you for giving this consideration. Thank you for considering moving this forward so the town has an option come the next town meeting. As you all know, this is this is an important issue for for the town. So thank you, and I I I hope it'll, you know, move forward with a positive recommendation today. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. Dan?
Good afternoon, Dan Mills from Green Middle Drive. Just wondering what the projection is for the units on the sites in total, the number of unit total. And then what are the unintended consequences of having these sites as eligible properties to be redeveloped, the more attractive to redevelopment? Especially the Kitty site as opposed to the Martin's Landing site, which is less likely to be developed because it's already developed. Thank you.
So Danielle could probably answered that first question, Dan, which are the unit projections, I think, Danielle, right?
Yes.
Because you had to do that worksheet or
Yes, we had done some preparation for a previous meeting. And let me see if I can find those numbers.
And while Danielle's doing that, I'll just respond to, and this is kind of also leading to where I am with the Main Street ones as they're kind of it stands right now. And it's really, it's it's interesting because it's off the heels of the candidate's night at Kitty's. And we it was a great discussion too about, you know, got into sewer a little bit and how just the the dire need for the town to get some sewer solution, again, whether packaged pipe, whatever into Main Street, onto Main Street, under Main Street, that serves businesses and can and can start kind of build it and we will they will come type of momentum and inertia that's needed. And so my concern with this particular overlay, I'm not I'm I'm I applaud the multifamily overlay that's already in existence there now. That's great. But what it does provide is kind of like the need for that business component. And I just I I'm concerned with a Main Street. And this is kind of to you, Dan, you know, but to everybody, that would only be like a whole swath, say, like Kitty's, and it would just only be resi and there'd be no business there. And I I'd rather like I looked to Andover, I looked to North Reading, I'd like to see more like if we can get the retail or businesses, anything on the ground floor, then we create that downtown thing. And I don't, I I'm nervous about that. So that's kind of where I stand. It doesn't mean I can't you know, evolve and maybe hear a good case or if they allow you to do one lot and not this lot. But right now, the way it's like wholesale, is it nine lots, I think? Danielle, nine parcels, I should say.
And the one on the one
Winter, winter. Yeah, okay. Oh, okay. Yeah, and Edgewood, sorry.
Sorry, nine at Windsor and Maine.
Got it. Yeah, that's what I meant. I just meant, sorry, the the Main Street kind of ones. But that's what just kind of concerns me right now. So that's where I stand, Dan. So I don't know. You know, we can't know what it would look like, but I think if we have this opportunity to kind of re envision a Main Street with sewer and everything like that, I think that wouldn't be the smartest thing to do to put these lots forward when we can more easily do the two on Lowell that are fully developed. Like, we've always said, those are the easiest ones, even even the people and even at the time when I was very opposed to this. I was saying, I understand this is a layup. I literally said it on my very first time I spoke about this. I understand it's a layup. So my issues were more with the law, you know, but moving forward here, I do still think those two parcels are the best. I do not think that there'll be an impactful there'll be a problem if we were to, you know, make the and create those into the MBTA, you know, Communities Act versus the ones on Main Street. So I hope may may myself clear, I may probably just rambling, but Warren, any any you want to add anything to that? And same way, I'll go I'll go around the I'll go around the horn. I'm just starting with Warren.
Okay. I kind of agree with you, Dave, I a little bit different that I it's very difficult for me to give up any kind of commercial property that we might have an opportunity to develop commercially. So it'd be my second choice, but probably not my first, because I would really like to say, I mean, we've gone to a lot of trouble, even that, even as I said before, that property where where Martin's Landing is and where Edgewood is, we initially zoned that IO industrial office with the hopes of building some commercial endeavors over there to provide. And now we we turn them all over to residential. And we've lost some other down the north end of Main Street. We lost all that property down there to a forty B. So so while everybody's talking about trying to get our commercial base up to the twelve percent or whatever thereafter, we can't keep giving the land away to to residential. So that's one of my concerns. However, since I know we need, we need to come into compliance, in my opinion, coming into compliance first. And then if we have an issue with some particular part of the compliance, that we could sue the state. I mean, I'd much rather have us suing the state than the state suing us because then we're in the driver's seat, not the state. So that's a remedy that might be available to us if some of if some of what comes out of this, we're not happy with.
That's interesting. That's a good take.
I do. Sorry, I do have those numbers if you would.
Yeah, hit that and then we'll do and then we'll just continue on. But that thanks, Danielle. That'd be helpful to answer Dan's question.
Okay, so the state's requirement is that we have zoning in place that could yield seven hundred fifty units. The total running the compliance model, the total of estimated units that this could yield would be four hundred twenty eight for Edgewood. Of edge, that's pretty accurate because four hundred six is the number that Edgewood actually has. This proposal does not change any of the zoning at Edgewood. It doesn't raise the height. It doesn't do anything. So the state's estimate yields four twenty eight for Edgewood and then three hundred forty for the Main Street parcels is what the compliance model comes up with. So those are those are the those are the possible numbers.
Got it. Dan, does that answer your question? Or did you? Dan, does that answer your question? Or did you have any follow up on that?
Um, it answers my question. I just um. It's so it's so Kitty's could develop on just their property, three hundred and four units potentially? Is that?
They might. I mean, the compliance model the state gives us yields estimates. Um, and that's all. Because we don't know how large units might be. We don't know how many. People want to build. We don't know how tall we want them to be. We just know what the zoning parameters are. So these are really just estimates. I mean, you could have one property owner that wants to develop a lot of really, really tiny units. And um, you could have a property owner that wants to develop much larger units and so it would have a smaller yield.
And one of the things I can point out, Dan, is that when we were doing Edgewood, um. They told us what the probabilities were as far as kids in school and and then that they were going to build a lot of single. Uh, one bedroom units and then some two bedroom units. And we didn't uh. Know if that was going to work out. It turns out they they turned out to be exactly right. Those uh, there are a lot of young professionals that took all took those one bedroom units. So and of course, they didn't put any any kids in the school. So. And the number of kids that went to school out of that is pretty much in line with what they predicted. So. Um, so those that those numbers, that demand is pretty clear. So you could see somebody develop Kitty's, that Kitty's location and put a lot of single bedroom units in there and uh and actually. Um. Um. And actually find that they they had demand for them, although the code doesn't require, you know. That we that we make it if that we make it possible for them to put multi fam, multi bedroom units in.
So that the current overlay has been on the books for how long?
In twelve years.
Twenty fifteen or seventeen. I can, I can check that. Um.
So it's just seventeen, oh.
So no developer has come in in in. With the attraction of building residential, there is that hook that they also have to build commercial. Um, so they have not, they haven't, the, you know, it's been, it's as of, as of right, right? Is it based on the?
It's special permit.
Okay. Um, but they haven't, no developer has done that, probably because the commercial aspect of it is not very attractive. When you take away the commercial aspect of it, it's more likely that they're gonna jump in there and build residential development. So. Um, alright, thank you for your time.
And twenty seventeen, that zoning was put in place.
Twenty seventeen?
I think, Dan, it's more the lack of sewer and what, you know, the type of treatment you would need for that kind of amount of um. Um, units. And I think that that's more, you you add in. Um, twenty percent of commercial retail on the ground floor that is not. Water intensive, you know, they're just business, they're not supposed to be food service or whatever. That has actually a lower. You know, GPD type of requirement than the residences above it. So. You could still work with that eighty twenty. On this, on the septic side, which is the reality, you know. Because there is no sewer, um, then more than when you go hundred percent. So it gets more, it gets tougher on that footprint with a hundred percent. In my opinion, just on gallons per day.
Dave, um, we're getting close to twenty minutes to four. So are we still, are we still have a hard stop?
Yeah, we do. So let's like, I think, though I think we answered that question, but um, so I wanted to go back through the rest of the members. So um. Let's go to uh Mr. Griffin.
Do we have anybody else that wants to speak, Dave? Or um, are we good at this point? Or? Cause I I don't know if there are hands up. It looks like there are.
Yes. Okay, so if there are, I just wanted to give everyone an opportunity to talk about those, uh, some of the questions that were already raised, but cause I. Cause I had spoken, so I apologize. If not, we can just go back to the public and then to Warren's point, we do, um, we do have to. Move along here. We can always, again, you know, we're we're meeting on the the twentieth, but. If it's possible, I wanted to uh cover these two items. So um, Danielle, who else do you have on there?
Um, Mr. Gannon, I don't know if um his hand is still up from before or if he has another comment and then Mr. Massey's hand is also up.
It was, I'm sorry. I'll take it down.
Okay.
Thanks, Jim. How about Nick? Uh, has your signal improved?
I hope so. Can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, you're crystal clear. Thanks.
Beautiful. Um, I just want to say thank you, everyone. Um, I I just to, just echo, um. Sort of what you were getting at, Mr. Chair is. I'd hate to assign this to our, you know, our our main commercial corridor. And I know that this town has a lot of issues. I'm thinking, I'm thinking for the future of North Reading here of. You know, wanting to keep Main Street as our commercial corridor. I just hate to limit, you know, the opportunity that we have to increase our commercial. Uh, tax base in those areas. Uh, I I do like the existing zoning to. You know, have that hook and be able to. Put commercial on the bottom floor. So I just wanted to, you know, I I I do agree, I'd rather keep it off. You know, my opinion is that keeping it away from Martin's Landing is important. I think those people. Uh, care a lot about this, uh, but the other aspect is. You know, I I I truly, from a personal standpoint, wish you chose another area in town to do this. Because right now, the the commercial corridor, I I think is is the wrong choice. Thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Anybody else, Danielle?
I don't see any other hands up right now. Feel free to speak up if I am not seeing a hand or if you're not able to raise a hand.
So what I wanted to do, as I stated at the beginning, is on this, because. I um, I wanted to make sure that we um were definitive in our position, whether we're for or against this, we would, we would vote on this. Today, because again, this is the purpose of this. Monday in this meeting is the Main Street ones, not not citizen petition. If we can do the CP stuff, I want to. Um, which should follow right after this. But if if there's no further question, questions from the public. Um, I bring it back to the commission. And ask if there's any further discussions on this, because I I wanted to take a vote. And Danielle, do you have a motion? Uh, but again, I'll leave it open just to see if um, if Jeff or. You know, Ed or Max, do you have any questions on this one? Are you okay with us doing a vote on this right now?
Sure.
Yeah, that sounds good.
I have motions. Um, I don't know if you want me to screen share them. Um, they are in the OneDrive folder.
If you want, you could do, you could read the motions and then um, one of us could move.
Sure.
The chair, if I could.
Yep, of course, Jeff.
Yep, no problem. Um, so. To to kind of like Nick's point, right? So our footprint for commercial property is very limited. So we are kind of. And and we all wish that we had some land like that could absorb the water and. Um, you know, um, so we've come up with with, and I I think it's been great because Warren, you've been great kicking around some ideas about. You know, like what we can do and what our potential could, you know, like which way we could go with. Some of the treatment plant stuff, um, like we have all over town. Uh. So like with that commercial space. Um, the the amount of units that are um. That we would be looking at and like how much like commercial development, if we were to do that. Like, how much commercial development would we actually be opening up to? Like, you know, like, is there a percentage? Or have we studied any of that yet? Do we know? You know, like, maybe like that land.
I'm not sure we have, you know. Maybe there's a study on that.
Yeah, because I'm just curious, Dave, like, you know, if we um, if we rush into, well, not rush into, because we've been beating this thing to death. But uh, you know, my thought is that we're so limited on. On the land on on Main Street, we're so limited. Um, and that. You know, potentially, like, my thought is, Warren, if if we were to do like a um. If we were to do like a a treatment plant. Somewhere uh on Main Street, like what, like what would be the the? Because you've studied the land, you understand the layout. I, you know, I've talked to you many times, Warren. Um, so like in your expertise. Like, is that part of Main Street, like something that would be, what's something that you've talked about in the past? Because I know. You've presented some um, you know, treatment plant options before. I know, like, we talked about. You know, at one point, something behind Walmart or. You know, is this like a parcel and those parcels there? Would that be something that we we could include, Warren, in one of those?
There's actually, uh, Jeff, the the question is, the question is big. It would take me a while to tell you all of the factors. You know, and I and I mentioned the other night about we have, we already have a piece of land for a treatment plant. Because otherwise, now you're gonna have to take land, um, you're gonna have to take land out of the commercial development zone to put a treatment plant and a leach there. Uh, facility in, whereas we already have it laid out on the on, you know, the piece of land that we have out behind. Um, uh. That that we got, that we bought with the money from postal facility. Also. You you know, another factor that goes into this is the postal facility offered us their leach fields. Now there's a, because if we create a really clean product, we can dump a lot more into their existing leach fields than they are. So I mean, there were, so there's all kinds of possibilities to get this done. But uh, but it's a much bigger, it's much bigger than a five minute explanation. And so I've got a lot of it worked out and I plan on bringing it, trying to bring it forward so that everybody can understand what the possibilities are and how it would all work.
Right. So like, and I know, Warren, like, we've talked in the past, um. And we've had some really good discussions, it it, you know, um, at our meetings and outside of our meetings about these, but the potential to this stuff. You know, and you know, the Main Street, we only have one Main Street.
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I'm I'm not a fan of this right now for going taking over that property either. I, like I said, I I, we need to keep as much commercial space as we can. We need to hold on to it tightly because. It's getting away from us pretty fast, and I don't like it. I don't like it. It's not good.
Well, and another thing too is not to throw a wrench into this, but like the property across from the uh, um. Um. The post office, the um, can't, the hell's the name of it? I can't think of it.
The flush, flush there, or I mean, that's a.
No, no, um, the one that's uh for sale, the um. Oh, God. The stomach shop.
Oh, stop and shop, yeah.
Yeah, so like here we have, so like we're looking at um, that. That parcel and maybe potentially like. You know, what what can we do and like what is, you know, up with that piece of land? And then we now. Now we're looking at the other piece of land right next to it, you know, like the the part that we're talking about now, like it's one oh. Or whatever the numbers are, like Kitty's, the. The um, car wash and and all that stuff. And and it it just, you know, before, like, I I just, I I'm kind of with you, Warren. I would love to see. I mean, do you have any old models of anything that you guys have done in the past?
Do, yeah.
We have, what we have is on, uh, for fifteen years on the wastewater advisory committee, we did a, we did a matrix of the entire town to show needs. And and possibilities. So a lot of that. It is, a lot of that is still germane because the town hasn't changed, the soils haven't changed. You know, the waterways haven't changed, so all of that stuff is still uh pertinent. So um, that's a, that's a good basis, but it would take a while. Again, this is a bit, much bigger conversation than. Than than this and, you know, and and I I anticipate that uh being pushed a little into to try to get it started. So we'll, we'll see.
Right, um.
Uh, I think you'll be pretty happy with it.
Well, so the thing is, um, what I look at is um. And and I say it all the time, and it's like, I feel like a broken record, because when you look at like, from the front of Main Street. Um, to, you know, like the back part and like how much land actually goes and like. Correct me if I'm wrong, Warren, but some of that. When when you look at the the big picture in the lodge map and you look at those commercial swatches, um. They um, they shrink. Like, a lot of them are like, they're so narrow. You know what I mean? And I just don't know. You know, I just don't know. Like, when I look at this, I get nervous because the deci, like, the decision to. Just to give up, there's only, how many addresses are on Main Street? Not that many. You know what I mean? We don't have a lot.
I think, Jeff, that we, if we're gonna, if we're gonna do something, we're gonna have to move along here, so. Because we're running out of time.
Yeah, so I think that's why I just want, I want a motion on this, because I I have a, yeah, and also I think I have an understanding and consensus from. Conversations with us, um, where everyone stands. So that's why I'm calling for the motion on this, so we can just. Um, memorialize it. So if you want, Danielle, you can read the motion and.
Okay. Uh, the motion is made in the affirmative, just, I mean, you you can, it's a yes or no, uh, um. I moved at the CPC vote to submit the following articles discussed this evening to the select board and request their inclusion in the June twenty twenty-five town. Meeting warrant Lowell Road Mixed Use District, Main Street Mixed Use Overlay District, Site Planner Review Language, Zoning Map Update.
So moved.
A motion. Do I have a second? Max, anybody? Ed?
Dave, uh, sorry, can you hear me?
I sure can.
Excellent. To clarify, um, just to bring it all forward. So you know, I, yes, I second.
Okay.
Thanks, Max. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Uh, I I just want to say, you know, I have the concerns, just, I just want to voice it. I know it's repeating some of them, but just the. You know, the la, the last two community forums that we had, everybody has been pounding the drumbeat of needing more. Commercial development to to help off the tech, you know, offset the taxes. And the first thing this plan is going to do is potentially wipe out a whole swath of that. Um, and second, my other concern is, you know, we, Danielle, maybe I missed it, but. Has the state weighed in on this? Are they in favor of this or have they not given us an opinion?
No, um, it's not clear to us that we can have a a full, we can't have a full opinion from the state until we actually submit it. They, for the first. Uh, round of um, three A action plans, they allowed us to do a test review. Um, I I don't know whether they're doing the same for this. Um, and it's, it's not an answer we've been able to to get yet. So um, if it's something we want to submit, we can, and then we'll, we'd need to wait to see whether the state would accept it. And we would try to get answers before town meeting as best we could, but we may not have a guarantee.
Thank you.
Like I said, I just want to be clear too. So I have a motion and a second. No, no further discussion. A I vote is a yes, you're supporting this. We shouldn't endorse this Main Street article. A no is you do not support it. I just want to be clear on that.
So so one other thing too, um, when we were at, when we had, um. Danielle, maybe you can help me with this real quick. Um, we had a meeting of, or maybe two, three weeks, I think, three weeks ago. When you guys had sent the letters out at Ed's recommendation and we had the landowner, landowners back in. Um, you guys remember that? I don't know how long ago that was. But um, we, the the landowners, I'm pretty sure, I mean, the the feeling I got, I don't know what you guys think, but the landowners. At that time, after we sent the letters out, seemed to be um, to reject the idea. Is that the feeling that you guys got? I mean, that's.
Dave, that's why we're here. That's why we're here right now. Um, Jeff trying to vote on it.
Yeah.
Okay, I I just want to be clear, because I know like, I I.
I talked to a few people myself, Jeff, and I, Jeff, just, you know, I, to tip my handle a little, I'm not in favor of this.
Right. I I mean, I didn't, like, I I got the feeling that they they were not in favor of it. Um. And I personally, and just so you guys know where I stand, I, I did not participate in putting that forward, this this new plan with the. Kitty's and and all of that stuff. Um. So.
Alright, so we have a motion on, we have a motion to vote on right now, so.
Right. I mean, that's all, that's my gut feeling, is that just, we.
Are we gonna vote? Jeff, okay, Jeff, are we gonna vote or?
I.
I keep talking.
I know, and I'm just trying to get a good feel for this thing. I mean, if.
Well, you, if you don't want to vote on it, just, you can say no. You know, you get to vote. You know, we're gonna, we're five people right now. You have a motion on the floor.
Right, right. So we gotta do something with it, yeah, so. Sure, I guess we have to do what we have to do, yeah?
Alright, so I have, I have a motion in a second and for discussion is closed. Uh, we have to do a roll call on this. So Mr. Pierce, how do you vote?
I vote no.
Mr. Griffin?
No.
Mr. Sheen?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
Uh, Dave, can I ask for a point of clarification here?
Sure, yep.
Great. Uh, we're talking about the Main Street proposal.
Yep.
Main Street proposal, correct. Just it, we're not talking about Lowell Street at all.
Right.
So, okay. So, okay.
The zoning includes the main.
Yeah, meaning.
The proposals tied together, right?
Edgewood.
Hold, hold everyone.
Lowell Road proposal, not Martin's Landing. It's Edgewood, Main Street and the Site Planner Review Clarification and Zoning Map Update. Those.
So specifically, and maybe Danielle, you can help me in this clarification. I am in favor of the citizens petition.
Yeah, Max, we're not talking about.
Landing. Yes, I know we're not talking about that now, but understanding that I'm.
Max, everyone, I, point of order is chair. We, we have a motion on the floor right now, Max. We are not talking about citizens petition. We need to vote. Okay. So we have three votes in right now. We gotta go around the horn here, actually four, three votes.
Totally.
So how do you vote on the Main Street? That's what the motion is, not on citizens petition. Okay. Thank you. The chairs, the chairs are no two. The motion fails. All right. So we did a good job of running out the clock. So, um, there's only six minutes left. Um, so we do not have time to get into the citizens petition. As I mentioned at the beginning, that is, um, or it was continued to, uh, May twentieth. So that'll be, um, on the agenda for the twentieth. We'll have a similar discussion on the merits of endorsing that, those citizens petitions, because there's three. Um, in particular, one, the, the first one being the most important and the others kind of follow in. Um, so I mean, that's, that's kind of where, where I apologize. We ran out of time. Um, and is there any other comments from the chair, uh, from the, uh, from the CPC members before we close this out?
Not for me.
I have one question.
Sure.
I'm good, Dave. Thank you.
Um, as far as what will be, uh, printed in the warrant, we have, uh, the other citizen's petition, the RD citizens petition. Um, I, you voted, uh, not to recommend that, that can be submitted to be printed in the warrant. The others would just say a, um, recommendation to be made at town meeting is that I just want to make sure that that's, that's okay. It's not a requirement, but that's.
Yeah, and I think our, I appreciate that and, and absolutely understand that. So we, that's why I was hoping to get a vote on it today. That can't happen right now because of time and people's schedule. This is kind of a special meeting, but, uh, so for the public, again, we will take that up on the twentieth though. Uh, we won't wait to the, uh, town meeting and we'll just get people's position. We'll let them, you know, uh, vote on the, on the twentieth. So that's how we're going to do it. But if that's it, I appreciate everyone's time on a Friday afternoon jumping on. I know everyone's time is important. So appreciate it. Have a good weekend, everyone.